Calling to order, the committee of the whole meeting for Diamond Lake School District 76. Roll call please.
Armenta Hale.
Here.
Hauptman.
Here.
Candela.
Mon.
Here.
Lozada.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and do me a favor and unmute for microphone.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America.
To the Republic which stands. Nation under God. In the visible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments this evening on our agenda? If you have a public comment, like always, please feel free to type that into the Q and A box and we will read it into the meeting. And it looks like Dave is here now too. Okay, so we'll wait a second to see if we have any public comments. Okay, well, I do not see any public comments, so we will move on to presentations.
Great, thank you. We have one presentation this evening and it's an update on how in-person learning is going following the hybrid. Excuse me, the hybrid schedule that we currently have in place. Can I just ask, I'm not sure if everyone's muted, but I can hear some background. I just want to make sure that our panelists can, or excuse me, our participants can hear the presentation. Thank you. So can I ask Mr. Hanson if you would mind sharing your screen? I'm going to provide you right now with a brief overview from each of the building principals and Ms. Carrera is going to translate for us. But an overview and an update on how the past few weeks have gone with hybrid in-person learning in each of our schools. And so I'll let, I'll pause, I'll let Ms. Carrera translate and then I'm going to introduce Dr. Fredericks, who will give us our first update for Diamond Lake School.
I think you're unmuted.
I'm unmuted. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Sorry, I couldn't see you, Daisy, so I didn't know. I apologize. I only see a small number.
Um, we've been asked that this is the, esta presentación va a ser la actualización de aprendizaje híbrido en persona de cada escuela. Y primero vamos a empezar con la doctora Fredericks, quien va a dar la actualización del aprendizaje híbrido en la escuela de Diamond Lake.
Okay, Dr. Fredericks.
Well, first, let me take a moment to just share our pictures this evening. The first picture we have in Mrs. Baroghi's kindergarten classroom, our students are enjoying breakfast and you can see that they're all seated apart, but they are back in school, so that's something to celebrate for sure. Next in our big middle is Mrs. Wagner's preschool students. If you look closely, you can see that all students are separated by a plexiglass shield, but they're able to work at tables and it's just so nice to have them back. And finally, we have one of our fantastic learning associates with one of our little guys just working independently. So I do want to share the number of students that we have back. In our A hybrid, Monday and Tuesday, we have a total of 95 students. And on Thursday and Friday, we have a total of 96 students. So we're, we're very consistent from day to day. Most of our students are, kindergarten has the most back in person. Our preschool program and our early childhood program have students eight in each and they are in the morning only. And then our teachers do a great job of working with the rest of the students online in the afternoon. And we have a total of 51 students that are attending four days a week. So just over half of ours are in person for both A and B. Things have been really going well since our kids came back into the building. Our teachers feel that they are doing extremely well, wearing their masks and practicing all of the rules and they really enjoy interacting with each other. Kids have adjusted much faster and we have a really positive atmosphere, so that's pretty exciting. So I'm sure Mr. Preble would also like to give a few updates.
Um, can I ask Ms. Carrera to please translate?
My apologies.
No, that's okay. I was going to say, and if Daisy, if you need for Dr. Fredericks to repeat anything.
My, I'm so sorry about that.
You're fine. I got it. I think you got it. So we're just asking some of the doctora Fredericks, les está dando la actualización de la escuela de Diamond Lake. Primero aquí pueden ver las, unas fotos de los estudiantes que están de dentro de las escuelas. A la mano izquierda es una foto de los estudiantes de kindergarten y en medio puede ver de pre-Ke preescolares. Y luego a la mano derecha es una de las, una de las maestras asistente como uno de nuestros estudiantes. También nos dio unos números de, el número de los estudiantes que están en las escuelas divididas por los grupos. En el grupo A tenemos 95 estudiantes y esos son los estudiantes que van a la escuela los lunes y martes. Del grupo B, que es el apellido de la L hasta la Z, tenemos 96 estudiantes y ellos van a las, a las escuelas jueves y viernes. Kindergarten tiene los más estudiantes y luego de preescolar tenemos y educación temprana son ocho estudiantes en cada nivel de esos grados que van a la escuela solo en las mañanas. Y tenemos 51 totales estudiantes que van a la escuela cuatro, los cuatro días a la semana. Y nada más un recordatorio que los estudiantes no atienden los miércoles. También dio una actualización que todas las reglas están, las están siguiendo en, en los salones. Y también ha escuchado de las maestras un ambiente positivo de los estudiantes y el personal que está dentro de las escuelas.
Thank you, Daisy. Mr. Preble, would you like to give an overview of West Oak Intermediate, please?
Thank you, Dr. Sharm Lewis. So I'll walk through my pictures real quick. The first one you see on the left is our students eating in our lunchroom spaced out appropriately.
En la mano izquierda puede ver, esta es la escuela intermedia con el director Preble. A la mano izquierda puede ver los estudiantes comiendo en la cafetería. Están siguiendo el distanciamiento social.
Our picture in the center, while this is our health class going on right now, it's indicative of what our simultaneous learning looks like, where we have students in person and we have a teacher working with those students as well as the students that are remote. And you can see behind on the screen, the Google call is there so that the kids in person can see the kids at home and vice versa.
Y luego en la escuela, en la, en la fotografía del medio puede ver un ejemplo de uno de los maestros. Y esto es el aprendizaje simultáneo que donde son los estudiantes que están dentro de la escuela y los estudiantes que están al remoto. Y ahí puede ver la pantalla donde los estudiantes están de videoconferencia y los estudiantes que están dentro de la escuela pueden ver a esos estudiantes también.
And in our last picture there is just an example that we are able to do specials in the classroom. And in this particular place, place, we're doing PE and it's Mr. Campbell doing some exercises with the students. So we're able to do some things though modified in the classroom.
Y luego a la mano derecha puede ver de educación física todavía pueden hacer unos, todavía podemos tener el ambiente positivo en los salones. Este siguiendo esas direcciones de distanciamiento social. Aquí es un ejemplo de uno de los maestros este haciendo unos ejercicios con los estudiantes.
And we are at about 53% of our students are in person. So that's a nice number. So our A B is pretty balanced. Our A days are a little bit heavier than our B days.
También este tenemos cinco, casi 53% de los estudiantes que están en persona. Y es casi igual el número de los estudiantes del grupo A, grupo B, el grupo A tenemos un poquito más, unos poquitos más estudiantes.
And overall, the things are going well right now as our attendance is much better and our engagement is way up. And I will add that, you know, there's students that don't necessarily like school or at least, you know, they didn't. And now that they're back, I've seen them smiling through their masks almost every day that they're here. So that's pretty encouraging.
También quiere dar una actualización este que ha escuchado que la particip, la, la asistencia ha aumentado ya que estamos dentro de, que los estudiantes están dentro de las escuelas y también la participación ha aumentado y está un poco mejor. Y puede ver la alegría de los estudiantes cuando están dentro de los, del edificio.
Thank you. And I will toss it over to Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you so much, Mr. Preble. We'll start with these wonderful photos. On the left, you can see that is Mr. Peterson giving a powerful student orientation speech as per our students that joined us on the first day of in-person learning in our cafeteria.
A la mano izquierda puede ver el director asistente, el señor Peterson donde está dando una, una presentación de orientación a los estudiantes cuando regresaron a las escuelas.
Thank you. I see you didn't use the word powerful, Ms. Carrera, but that's okay. So the second photo we have here is it's pretty typical class of how it is set up. This is a sixth grade ELA class. Students are engaged primarily remotely in terms of the lesson plan. But I'll talk a little bit about some of the celebrations for how well it's, how well it's gone for these students that are in our room in person and how well teachers have adapted.
Oh, esta, este es un ejemplo en la fotografía del centro de artes lingüísticas de inglés de los estudiantes que están, que estaban aprendiendo al remoto. Y ahorita también este nos va a dar una actualización sobre esto.
Right, of course, is our gymnasium and students do properly social distance. And the PE department has a very great way of keeping all of our supplies and equipment clean and are able to do a number of activities where students are able, like I said, to socially distance and students do not change for PE.
Y la mano derecha puede ver los estudiantes que están en la clase de, de gimnasio. Les quiere dar un recordatorio, los padres, que todo el equipo y material que usan está limpiado y también siguen las directrices del distanciamiento social.
Right now, we have, on our A days, we have 95 students coming and on our B days, we have 75 students. So that's a little bit under half of our population that has come back to school. And I will echo what Mr. Preble said, that our students are very excited to be back and they typically whisper it because they want to be cool. But they'll let, they've told the teachers that they're very excited to see them and they're glad they're there and it's been, it's been wonderful.
También este quiere dar una actualización que, para el grupo A, en la escuela secundaria de, de West Oak tenemos 95 estudiantes que están dentro de las escuelas y el grupo B tenemos 75 estudiantes que están, so es menos porcentaje que, que las otras escuelas, pero de todos modos la emoción está ahí, los estudiantes aunque no lo están, you know, no, no los dicen de fuera, le han dicho a unos de sus maestros que sí están alegres de regresar a dentro de los edificios.
I think one of the biggest advantages of having students in person as well is a number of students that need the support and need help as they navigate their work. We've been able to do that. It's been very good for their grades, very good for their comprehension. And we're really grateful that we've been able to provide this opportunity. It's really benefited our students academically.
A mí también quiere dejarles saber que eso es algo que les está ayudando a los estudiantes con su trabajo y sus grados. Y luego puede ver que la, están aumentando en la comprensión también, les está ayudando los estudiantes a aumentar, aumentar en esos temas teniéndolos dentro de las escuelas.
Thank you, Ms. Carrera. I'll turn it over to Dr. Sharm Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. So I think as you've heard from each one of our principals tonight as well as from Ms. Carrera, that how successful and positive things are going and how we want to continue to maintain this positive momentum as we progress to add students and increase the number of days that students can possibly come back to school.
Y luego nada más de un resumen, como pueden ver, por ahorita tenemos, pueden ver de parte de cada director del, cómo está de exitoso que sus estudiantes están dentro de nuestros edificios y lo que hemos escuchado de los comentarios siendo positivos. Y queremos continuar esto para seguir en los pasos y el desarrollo para aumentar más de los estudiantes que vienen dentro de nuestras, nuestros edificios.
And I think just a couple of things that I want to highlight, you know, that we've worked with staff on. It's, you know, meeting with them and getting their feedback as well as each of the principals have met with their building teams. And that some students who are in need, we've added days on, so they're coming four days a week in addition to the FDLA students. So students who may require, whether they have IEPs or just extra interventions or resources, they're coming to school four days a week.
Otra cosa que quieres, quieres comentar es que hemos aumentado un poquito de los estudiantes que vienen cuatro días de la semana a nuestras escuelas y eso es porque los directores están trabajando con cada, el nivel de liderazgo de los maestros. Y de nuevo, eso es dependiendo si tienen un IEP que es un plan individualizado o si tienen, son más necesitados en apoyos que necesitan dentro de las escuelas.
Our staff have been back in the building every day for over a month. And, you know, I'm happy to report that our mitigation factors are working, that staff are safe and they're healthy and we have no reported outbreaks.
También quiere dar una actualización que ya el personal los tenemos dentro de nuestros edificios por casi un mes. Están seguros, están saludables y estamos dando gracias que, de eso, que todos están saludables y que nadie ha tenido este cualquier enfermedad.
And today, the district leadership team met with the professional advisory council, which are three members of staff from each of the buildings. And they gave us great feedback, positive as far as how well things are going. Not only with their students, but just logistics and operations of, you know, entering and exiting the building as well as suggestions from staff on how to make improvements as we increase the number of days and add students as we go forward.
Y también hoy el equipo de liderazgo del distrito tuvo una reunión con la comité avisora de maestros que son tres miembros del personal de cada edificio y ahí podemos, nos dieron, les dieron comentarios y urgencias de cómo, de cada cosa positiva que está pasando en las escuelas. También este les, les dan comentarios sobre mejoramientos que podemos ver. Pero por ahorita todo, todos los urgencias y comentarios que han dado han sido positivas.
And my last positive thing to report, even though there's many more, but this one is just worth noting that even though everybody's wearing a mask, you can definitely see the smiles not only on the student faces, but also on the adult faces for being back.
Y luego una de las últimas cosas positivas que quiere comentar, aunque tenemos muchas más cosas positivas que están pasando dentro de nuestras, nuestras escuelas. Aunque tengan las máscaras cuestas, podemos ver también la alegría de, del personal que tenemos dentro de las escuelas y es algo que también quería comunicar.
And then I'd like to just summarize on this slide in front of you is just a couple of data points and then some important dates as we plan and move forward with in-person learning and the hybrid schedule. Is currently, we have a survey that we had sent out, about 94% of our staff plan to get both vaccinations and most of them by spring break. So next Monday, as we had shared with you in previous communications and presentations, we will be sending out updated declarations of intent to all families. And that's where they can decide whether they want to stay in their current placement or if they want to change whether come to in-person learning or go back to remote learning on that new declaration. We'll give them a week to complete that survey data. And then that'll be due on the following Monday, which is March 15th. And we also have a plan in place for principals and staff to follow up with parents and families who may not respond to that declaration of intent, just as we did last fall. And we also have another point of contact, which will be parent teacher conferences will be on March 18th. So if we don't, aren't able to reach out or connect with families, we have that opportunity during parent teacher conferences to ask them to update their declaration of intent. So we're going to review that data, most of it on the 15th. And then the following Tuesday, which is our next board meeting, March 16th, the district leadership team will present second semester teaching and learning plans to you as a board of education. And then we are going to ask that you give us direction and action on which plans you'd like to see as far as going home, going forward for the remainder of second semester. And we're going to base those decisions on the declaration of intent data as well as what Lake County and CDC guidance says with our mitigation factors. And all of the plans are going to be based on just conversations and feedback and observations and data that we've collected throughout the past six weeks as students and staff have been back in the building. So right now, you know, we'll share with you, depending on if we can do this safely, whether we remain in hybrid with current A B schedules or increase the days of the week and to go possibly a full week depending on how many students and families choose to come back.
Okay, I keep it in.
Oh, I'm sorry, Daisy. I'm sorry.
Aquí pueden ver uno, el resumen y los siguientes pasos para los unos días en el futuro. Este tenemos, hemos recibido, mandamos una encuesta al personal y casi, perdón. 94% del personal planea recibir sus, las dos vacunas este para la, por el tiempo de las vacaciones de primavera. Para el 8 de marzo vamos a enviar las declaraciones de intención. Esto es un, esto es la encuesta actualizada a nuestras familias. Quien les da la opción de cambiar si están los estudiantes al remoto de mandarlos a en persona. Y eso se vence para el 15 de marzo y tenemos un plan también con los directores para comunicarnos con los padres o las familias que, quien no, este, quien no nos han dado esa declaración de, de intención de regresar. Para el 16 de marzo, el liderazgo de, el equipo de liderazgo del distrito va a presentar los planes de enseñanza y aprendizaje del segundo, segundo semestre a la junta educativa. Y aquí van a decidir si van a permanecer híbrido con el horario A B actualmente que tenemos o vamos a aumentar los días de la semana que sería una semana completa y eso es algo que puede, posible pasar. Y luego aquí también puede ver de 12 de abril hasta cuatro del junio implementar el resto de los planes de enseñanza y aprendizaje del segundo semestre. Que eso permite 14 días para las familias o el personal quien necesite estar en cuarentena después de posible viaje de vacaciones de primavera.
And then after that board meeting, whatever plans we decide to keep in place for the remainder of second semester, we'll start on Monday, April 12th and go through the last day of school, which is June 4th. And this will allow for 14 days of quarantine if needed for families and staff who may quarantine after potential spring break travel. So we felt also that this will give us, after spring break, two weeks for those families or staff that may travel if they need to quarantine themselves for safety reasons, but also give our staff, depending on how many students come back, time to plan and our, time to plan not only academically, but also physically for the spaces that we may need to modify or change due to the numbers that are coming back.
Y de nuevo, para el, el 12 de abril, esto van, después de revisar los datos, eso es cuando se va a implementar el resto de los planes de enseñanza. Fue algo que acabo de comunicar, pero también esos, esas dos semanas además de dar el personal y las familias tiempo para cuarentena también da a las maestras y los maestros tiempo para cambiar su espacio dependiendo de, de cómo vamos a hacer, implementar el resto de los planes de enseñanza y aprendizaje.
And that concludes our presentation this evening. So if there's any questions or comments from the board, we can take them now as we look to present you the plan on March 16th at our next board meeting.
Hi, first, congratulations. It's a great progress that you guys have made and we hope you continue that. My first question has to do with the March 16th, so that's a target date. And just to clarify, do you anticipate at, on that day to make the final decision? Or do you think you'll need a little more time, maybe a couple of extra days in the event that you have, you know, some, some late returning on the, on the surveys? Just want to kind of understand on the 16th if we're going to vote on something fixed or we're going to have to give you flexibility?
That's a great question. You know, ideally, I think we'd like to have you vote on the 16th. And, you know, in the best case scenario is all of our data comes back. We've heard from all of our families, so that that's not realistic. But if we have at least an idea of a pretty accurate number of who wants to come back to in-person learning, who wants to stay in-person learning, then we're able to share that with you and kind of adjust our numbers, you know, according to that.
Okay, okay. And then in your presentation, you, you listed that 94% of the staff is planning on getting vaccinations. What's the impact of that 6%?
Um, so we asked them in a survey if they were planning to get the vaccine or they're still thinking about it or they prefer not to answer. So we had about seven people kind of between those two. So I feel like for the majority of staff that are back and then there are some that are on leave of absence, those that are on leave of absence will come back after they're vaccinated. So I believe that the seven that are out right now, it's not impacting them. They're back in the buildings.
Okay. And my last question is this, you've accounted for, well, you, you told us the numbers for the students in each of the schools. Are there any students that we have not accounted for?
Can I ask the principals to respond to that? To my knowledge, I don't think so, but I just want to confirm that, please.
Sure.
Yeah, for the, for the intermediate school, everybody's accounted for.
Okay, excellent.
Yes, Diamond Lake School, everybody is accounted for.
And the middle school as well.
Okay, the record stays intact. That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question about the two weeks after spring break, the two week time quarantine. Will students still be on like the A B hybrid schedule or will it be fully remote in those two weeks?
We'll continue with A B hybrid.
Okay. And then are we going to be encouraging families that traveled to stay remote?
So we prepared a letter to go out tomorrow that kind of outlines all the CDC guidelines and the protocols for traveling. So if they travel internationally, they have to come back with a negative test. And so, you know, we'll just trust that, you know, if they're back, you know, in the country, that they have a negative test and they're safe to come back to school. If there are families that travel locally and they have symptoms or they may not have followed, you know, the mitigation guidelines or the safety guidelines, then we're going to, you know, just ask them to, you know, self-monitor and quarantine themselves.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question for Mr. Hanson. So how did the district network handle the first few weeks back with all the students and staff kind of on, using the technology? Were there any lags, glitches, problems that you encountered?
We only noticed for a day or so, a little bit, one of the buildings, but that wasn't, that wasn't based off the network trafficking. That was something that needed to be reconfigured at Diamond Lake School. That was adjusted after about a day or so. So VSP tests and everything, the network is handling it very well. Simultaneously being, not only using Google Meet, but also in person and having everybody all connected. So we're happy to share that.
Okay, good. So are teachers and staff, are they able to fully optimize all technology that's available to them without any hindrance or?
Yeah, yeah, our network is able to support it and, you know, better than, you know, it's enterprise level compared to home networking. So yeah, everybody's be able to, we're able to accommodate all of our staff members in person and virtually.
Okay, great. That's, that's great. Thank you.
I had a question. I just wondered if we have students that came back for one or two days and then chose to go remote or to not return back to school? And if we do have those students, if we were able to follow up and find out, you know, why they weren't choosing to stay in the hybrid model?
Can I ask the principals to respond to Mrs. Hale, please?
Um, at, at Diamond Lake School, we did have, we have had a handful of those families, a very small handful. I'd say about five students. A couple of the students.
A very small handful, I'd say about five students. A couple of the students went on vacation. And when they did, what we decided, and I spoke with the families, was to just have them go to the distance for consistency purposes. And then when we come back again, they'll have another opportunity when we reopen it. And we've had a couple of families just feel that it was better for them for personal reasons to stay home. But in order to keep our numbers consistent, what we've done is if a family does decide to make that decision, the teacher has been able to select and invite a child who has been coming on one of the hybrids to the second hybrid. So a family, a child who might have a challenge with attention or might have been in working out of a daycare program. And we know is doing so much better at school that the teacher has been able to offer that slot to to a child. So that that's why our numbers are up to unsold many four-day-a-week students.
At the intermediate school, we had one student that started and then was pulled back to remote and that was just a family decision.
The middle school, same. We had one that I've been made aware of and my understanding it was a family decision and and we didn't get any more information beyond that.
Thank you. That's good to hear.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then at the March sixteenth meeting, we're keeping our fingers crossed that we have some good data to bring back to you. So we're able to share a plan for what March, excuse me, April twelfth through June fourth will look like. And it is all of our goal, I think, in this meeting and at our table and throughout the district to bring more students back in person for more days of the week.
That's great. Thank you. Okay, then that concludes our presentations for this evening and we are going to move on to our business agenda. And we have two items for action. The first item is just the omnibus vote agenda and that is not up for action this evening. That will be up for action at the March sixteenth board meeting. The second item up for action is the school calendar for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. I didn't know if anyone had any questions or comments before we proceed to vote on that issue. So I thought I would just ask.
I would like to make a comment. I did notice on the school calendar that October eleven is a non-attendance day in celebration of Columbus Day. And I would like our board in a future meeting to consider and discuss changing the name of this holiday. And I would like to just propose that we put that on the agenda for a future meeting.
Okay, we can certainly do that. Does anyone else have any other questions or comments? Okay, then we will proceed. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the presented twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school calendar as presented by the district leadership team. May I have a motion to approve the calendar?
Lozada?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Juan, yes.
Okay, the calendar is approved. Moving on to item C on our business agenda, which is personnel. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have one new hire, one resignation, and there's one informational position change included. May I have a motion to approve the personnel items? Second.
I'm sorry, was that Nicole? I can't see. Nicole? Second, okay. Candela? Candela?
Yes.
Yes, Sullivan?
Yes.
Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Juan, yes, Lozada?
Yes.
Okay, the personnel items are approved and that concludes the business portion of our agenda for this evening. Now, we will move on to board discussion and we have a number of items up for discussion tonight. The first item is a TIF update. I don't know, Bobna or Eric, if you guys wanted to give an update there.
Sure. I know that the board had asked, you know, some several follow-up questions as far as or some board numbers, excuse me, they had some follow-up questions regarding the TIF. And if we would follow up with Amanda Orincheck from the Village. And so I've attached those two emails where those questions were listed as well as our responses and Amanda's responses. After our last meeting where Amanda presented, she also shared with us her PowerPoint as well and some resources that were on the Village website. So we included those on there as attachments. So I don't know if the board has additional questions or if you want us to clarify anything in, you know, the way that we understood and I just wanted to share with you and Eric Gilfree, please to add or comment. But, you know, the previous time that there was a TIF and I believe that was about five years ago, there was, I believe, just Mrs. Hale was on the board at the time. And Erica just started and Mr. Libado, who was the village. I'm losing the village. A village administrator at the time and Mayor Lentz came to our board three times sharing out the potential TIF in the area. And so they asked the board to vote, they asked the board at that time took a resolution for a no vote to just approve the TIF. This time around, Eric Gunther did stop by late in August, kind of shared what their plans were and that they would communicate with the board as they got closer to the Village Review Board meeting day. We have not heard from the Village. In fact, Amanda reached out to us in January, letting us know that they were going to be taking a vote on this and we had asked her to come to a board meeting. When it didn't happen that she came, I believe the date was February tenth, that they were taking us to the Village Review Board, that she didn't come, she came to our meeting on the February sixteen, so it was more or less after the fact. So I can see where some of you have questions and some of you have concerns and what are next steps. So I don't know what next steps the board would like to take as far as, you know, passing a resolution, writing a letter, attending the next Village Review Board meeting, which I believe is on April twelfth, when they actually do take that vote. So that is the way that I understood it. That's kind of like the timeline of events that in the past, we've been made very aware and they brought us along step by step with what they were doing as well as included our board in the discussions. And giving you a chance for feedback and to take a vote. That was not the process that was followed this time. So I appreciate all the questions that have come forward. And as you can see through the emails, we've been very detailed in our responses and what the process has been and how Eric and I have been involved. So I'm happy to take more questions or if we want to discuss how we want to proceed forward.
Has the process been very different this time because the last TIF discussion was an extension of an existing TIF and this is a creation of a new TIF? Is that the difference in the process?
Yeah, that's what I understand is the main difference was they they're required to each district has a resolution last time around, whereas this time the joint review board had the authority to to pass the tip with a majority that voted on it.
So this, just to be clear, this time around, if this were an existing TIF and they were seeking an extension of that TIF period, the process would have followed something similar to the timeline that you saw before. Is that correct?
I would have to double check with the Village on that. Again, it was two new administrators, two new people that were in charge of this go around. So I don't know if this is past practice that John Libado and Mayor Lentz had when they were, you know, very diligent about bringing our board along and they're really concerned about getting everyone to buy into their plan and approve it at that time. So they're very well invested in it. So I had to double check with the Village if the process would be verbatim as last time. But that's what my impression is is there it was a different process for extending it versus creating a new district, which is the joint review board really had unilateral authority on that, at least recommended, but the Village kind of had the authority to move forward with this.
I mean, I thought the information that you provided was very helpful. And it it it's really not a surprise, meaning that that parcel of land, the main one is is the one that at least since I've been on the board is sort of the only one that would even be possible to develop for residential. So that's really the only one left in the district where there could be an increase in in residence and in and in turn in school population. So, you know, the fact that somebody wants to develop it A, isn't really a surprise and B, you know, is, you know, is a much better use than than what it is right now. And 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 just given the information that you provided, if, you know, the TIF is to help elevate that land, you know, out of being blight blighted. And that certainly seems like the right thing to do. It's not doing anybody any good the way it is. And and if it adds sixty students to the district, I think that we can accommodate that and 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 quite frankly, that would probably just about max out any other residential, any other possibility of building, you know, any other residential units in the district. So yeah, we would, you know, we could get some, some, you know, some some TIF dollars from it, but you know, it it just appears, even if it wasn't managed by them the right way, it just appears like unless I'm missing something, it's the right thing to do for the for the community.
And Mr. Hauptman, I I agree a hundred percent with you because I'm trying to find out what is the negative to this and I agree with you. I've been in Vernon Hills since eighty-six and that area had, you know, I had some businesses there. But as you've seen in the last ten, twelve, fifteen years, there's just been no no activity. And rather than leave it as is, which is not providing really any benefit to anyone, if we have an interest, that's great. If we leave it as as is, there's nothing to gain from it. If we allow the TIF to go forward, there's still no penalty to us. There is a gain as you outlined. So I I'm trying to, oh, you know, pushing aside how it was managed. I'm trying to look at it from what what's the best impact for our school. Yes, it means an increase in student population, but it's also, it also means an increase in some dollars coming back to us. So I again, if someone has a has a way of portraying what is the negative to our school, please let me know because I just can't quite see it. And then having lived in Vernon Hills, was so long and hoping to live here even longer, that would that would be a welcome change for me. You know, watching that area being developed.
Sure. Well, I think the the negative for the for any TIF is just that you freeze the E A V at that level for twenty-three years. And so if someone came in and developed that area and the E A V shut up, you know, we would be able to recoup that those additional tax dollars outside of the TIF. In the TIF, if it gets developed and the E A V shoots up, we don't actually get any increase or the any of the taxing bodies don't see any of that increased E A V until those twenty-three year twenty-three years end. And so you kind of miss out on that money in the interim and you miss out on kind of the inflationary cost there. But that's assuming that that land would actually get developed without the TIF. And, you know, I think both to your point, Sean and Jose, we've certainly seen especially that parcel that's where the Menards was, sit vacant for years and nothing is happening. And we've heard stores have interest and leave and whatever. So I think you both make excellent points that, you know, without the TIF or with that the land might just be stuck at this anyway. And, you know, even if the E A V increases slightly, it it's not going to be enough to really make a difference. And based on the numbers kind of in their report, we can see that the E A V has gone up and down. It's increased a little, it went down, it increased a little again. So it's not it's not going to likely make significant gains unless they do some kind of development within the TIF there, it looks like to me.
Thanks, Joy.
I guess my concern is like, you know, knowing that that property has been in foreclosure for so many years. Like, do we, I mean, to say, yeah, it definitely needs a TIF to be redeveloped. I mean, I I don't know that I'm convinced of that at this point in time because it just came out of foreclosure like two years ago and it kind of seems like the the village has been kind of you know, dangling these TIF dollars to the developers, so they're not willing to move forward until they, you know, until they know one way or another. So I guess I'm a little skeptical on that and and I'm still like, I'm I'm trying to understand like what like the cost is to the district, like just adding those additional students. I'm not quite clear on that still. Eric, can you help me with that?
Sure, sure. And I appreciate this dialogue. I believe, you know, Miss Hale, you said it really eloquently in summarizing the general terms of the TIF and everyone was correct, you know, Nicole, you made a good point on you know, whether, we don't really know if the villages put their full effort on to exploring every single potential option out there besides going to the TIF. But, you know, in terms of our students, those additional students from at least from my perspective, from a district perspective, that's a very minimal cost of adding these additional students. Sixty-three students, you know, again, in a perfect world, they're spread out evenly among all of our classrooms. That's one point four students per classroom. So our grade level and our average class size jumps up one point four students. That doesn't mean we need to hire additional teachers, you know, again, all things being equal. That doesn't mean we have to repurpose any additional space in our building. We don't have to, you know, renovate existing space to make additional room for these kids. So the the cost of educating the students is is pretty minimal in terms of an overall cost. I know when you look at those numbers like the the operating per pupil expenditure, that all that does is take our total operating costs and divide it among the number of students. If you had sixty-three students that are operating costs, that that number goes down. So it's not the true cost of educating our students because most of these expenditures are realized regardless of these students are there or not. We're still going to have the same number of teachers. We're still going to have the same electrical expenses, our utility costs, our same general building renovation. You know, annual upkeep and things like that. So, you know, it's a it's not an exact science using that number to say every year that students have a cost of seventeen thousand dollars per person. Because in actuality, if we look at the cost of what we would do with these students versus what we do without them, the answer is really not a whole lot would be changing. You know, again, that's at least my opinion.
And I believe there was a question about transportation too. And so I think, you know, Eric can set up well, about as far as like one point two students per class. I mean, six, you know, our our maximum capacity on a bus right now is seventy-two students. So let's just say all of them were on one bus. It's an additional bus, but we know that's like the worst case scenario because if they're all spread out, it's, you know, an extra ten or fifteen kids on a route. Go ahead, sorry.
That is a great point. I'm sorry, I didn't I didn't take into account the transportation costs of it. Yeah, I know in a worst case scenario, again, either A, you're repurposing some of our existing routes. Instead of having thirty kids on a bus, maybe you have forty-five kids on a bus and you don't have to add anything new. You just repurpose those kids among existing routes. But the cost of adding one bus route is around sixty to seventy thousand dollars a year. But the cost of adding one bus route is around sixty to seventy thousand dollars a year, all things being equal. And what that doesn't take into consideration is we do get reimbursement from the state to offset some of those costs, so. There may be an additional transportation expense, but we also presumably look at all efficiencies that we have the option of, uh. Implementing before doing that cost.
Um, the other thing I'm concerned about is that sixty-three number and, you know, knowing that. You know, the, the village is going to be marketing this as less feeder to Stevenson, um. Yeah, I, I just, I guess I don't understand, like, if, if that sixty-three number is just kind of a generic number. Um, how can we get a more accurate number? Do they, have they had any other? You know, developments similar to this in the Stevenson District and what kind of numbers of students did those draw? You know, because it's one thing to have sixty-three more students and it's another thing to have. You know, a hundred and twenty more students, I mean, it, it definitely makes a big difference, so. And I guess I feel like I'm just like lacking information still at this point in time.
Yeah, no, I, I absolutely understand the, the, the formula that is generally accepted is referred to as the neighborhood formula or neighborhood model. And that is what's used to calculate the average number of students that come out of a one, two, three, four bedroom home. So, you know, obviously, that could be an inexact science, but it is. Um, it, it's generally accepted among all developers and villages, at least in the area that I've talked to. In terms of enrollment projections coming out of housing development, and it's the same formula that our, um. Enrollment study to be conducted this summer that they use. So when they're projecting all future enrollment, that's the baseline model that they're using, so, um. I would have to go and dig into it a little bit more to see if there's any comparable areas, because like you said, Stevenson, you know, does have, uh. And Diamond Lake has a good, uh. Selling point to move into and, you know, be part of that community. The, the cost, again, I'll just guess I'll mention the cost perspective, besides some additional transportation costs. Um, is going to be pretty negligible, the only main consideration would be there's any space constraints. And based on that number of sixty-three students, we don't feel like we're going to have any other, uh. Considerations to take in effect in terms of renovating or expanding some of our existing spaces, we still have some room to, uh, to function there, but. The model itself, I at least wanted to point out that that is both what we use in the enrollment study. And, uh, and what most villages are using, and our enrollment has gone down, you know, the last few years as well, so it really would be kind of rebalancing where we were. Levels even two years ago.
And I, I don't think we saw an overwhelming or an exceptional number of. Students coming out of, for example, the townhouses across the street from Gross Point when those were built. It's not like they attracted a disproportionate number of, uh. Of, of families with, with kids or families with, with high school age kids. Be- because of, because of its feeder district into Stevenson, I, I, I think. I, 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 I. I, I, eh, eh, if anything, I, I, you know, in, in some ways, I think you might see, you might see the opposite for, for a lot of reasons, but. I, I can't imagine that we'd see. Noticeably more than what, uh, has been predicted, you know, has been statistically significantly. Predicted using, using, uh, accepted models. As proven by the, the townhomes across from, uh, from Gross Point.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was trying to find that number while, while I was bringing up that point, but two years ago, our enrollment was ninety-one. Now we're at eighty-two, so we're ninety-nine down from where we were even two years ago, so. To say we can absorb, you know, even if that number was a little higher and approaching to one hundred. We're just balancing out to where we were a few years ago and still class sizes, you know, it wouldn't increase by, you know. It would be two students would be the max that we'd increase at that point.
Eric, I do want to ask, um, at what point were you aware that? The village was incorporating the property behind Garden Fresh and also behind. Um, the brunch plate, the restaurant there, I can't think of Ellie's, um. Because, you know, I, I remember you had incorporated some documents in previous board packets where. The village was sort of letting us know, hey, this might be coming. And they were putting us on notice about the potential Oak Creek property, but, um. When were we made aware that those other two parcels were going to be incorporated?
Yeah, it's a great question, I was looking back through my stuff and the, we had some draft plans for that residential area. Because that's the main area they're focusing on, the only area that has real tangible plans, um. Uh, Dr. Charm Lewis and I met with the village, it was probably a little over a year ago. They had a, a, a search firm that was trying to gather feedback on what districts and other taxing bodies would like to see in that area. That's the only time I ever heard it referenced was. You know, there, these are the general areas in Mundeline that we're looking to gather feedback for. But I wasn't aware it was going to be part of the TIF until, uh, you know, just a few months ago when they approached us to, uh, you know, uh. Eric Gunther and Amanda approached us to start talking about this a little bit further, so. There was nothing concrete that was made aware of, aware to me besides those, uh, draft residential plans.
I think the first time we saw it, Mrs. Kwan, was when we, uh, saw that presentation that we shared with you that first week of February. Where we actually saw the parcels of land. You know, if the board has other, you know, questions or specific follow-up, I know, Mrs. Sullivan, you said that, you know. You feel like you still don't have a lot of information, I mean, I am. You know, believe it or not, I'm no expert in TIFs or land acquisition, and I know that's. Um, Eric has been a really quick learner, um, in the past few weeks, um, as this information has come up, but we, um. Are happy to and welcome the opportunity to have Amanda come back or, um. With Mr. Gunther and we can facilitate a meeting with any board members. And if there's more than two board members that are interested, we can just post it as a, as a meeting and do it virtually. So if that's something that you're interested in before April twelfth, we're happy to set that up. Um, and you could either tell me now or you could email Lisa or I after this meeting and we can set something up, you know, as soon as possible with them.
And Bob, if you don't mind, I'd want to mention at least just one more additional point about the, you know, the EAV and the TIF itself. Since this is all developed property already, the, the EAV increases that you would see, say, even these properties didn't. Get new, uh, owners and needed some new people that were moving into those places, is going to be. Very negligible because they're moving into existing properties or, you know, like for instance Pizza Hut closes, Panera moves in. Uh, Arby's closes, uh, Chipotle moves in, they're just, you're just kind of reshuffling the same EAV. So there's really no definitive increases, so consider this the baseline EAV that is, uh, part of this TIF itself. Um, and the stagnant growth is, that has existed throughout there. That's the main reason they're proposing this is a really a tear down to try to redevelop this. To industrial property, that's the main reason behind Garden Fresh. And behind, uh, you know, Ellie's to some extent is there's only four percent vacant property in Mundeline for industrial growth. So, that's, you know, that's at least the main argument that Amanda made to me was. Uh, without this redevelopment, there's going to be no increase in EAV unless something. Dramatic happened that somebody wanted to take that project down themselves to tear down and rebuild over the same existing lot, so. Um, I guess just consider it the stagnant growth that we've had right now and the, what, what growth we've had over the last. Uh, you know, ten or so years since, since that property's been mostly vacant. The baseline of that versus what we, you know, what we potentially are going to see in the next ten or so years. Nobody believes there's going to be any, you know, any substantial growth, so I guess I at least just want to mention the tear down. And, and even if you're getting new people that's moving into those areas, there's not going to be even substantial increase without tearing down and rebuilding.
Eric, h- having said that, I, I just have to, a couple of questions popped into my brain, so, uh, uh, try to articulate them, so if, um. If we did not, um, support the TIF and things stayed as they were. What would then be the, uh, elements that would? Im- improve the EAV going forward, what would we be dependent on to affect the EAV status quo going forward?
If the TIF was developed as they promised.
No, 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 take the TIF out, let's say, you, you know, it's, it's not developed, so. It, so it stays as it's, the property stays as is, then for us, what do we, uh, are dependent on to, um, you know. Um, or look for to improve the E, the current EAV, what would we reliant on?
From Salvation Army to Garden Fresh, essentially like demo that entire strip mall. And then rebuild a, you know, two hundred thousand square foot industrial plant in its place to handle manufacturing.
That's the only in, uh, positive impact that could happen without the TIF, right?
Pretty much, that's what's been described to me, that's the kind of impact they would be looking to see. You know, which would have multiple thousands of dollar, hundreds of thousands of dollars of additional EAV, you know, should somebody do that.
Okay, so yeah, I'm just trying to dig in through, to, to understand, uh, if we hold as is, hold sand pat. And then, then we're depending on somebody stepping in and doing that, whether it's that, uh, that, uh, land, parcel of land. Or the Oak Creek plant, uh, land, um. Otherwise, the, i- i- enjoy, I just want to briefly articulate, the negative to us is that. EAV, if we, if we support the TIF, EAV then would be held at, at the present number. For what, twenty-three years or so? Okay.
Exactly.
Okay. So, a- a- as we can see then, um, whatever we are with TIF or without TIF. We're still, we, we'd be waiting on someone to step in and develop the land and hope for that with the TIF, so. Yeah, i- i- it's one of those scenarios where it's just hard to anticipate who, who's going to step in. And it hasn't happened in many years, not sure, maybe coming out of bankruptcy, that may incite someone to, you know, make an investment, we're not sure. It's, there's, it's not a guaranteed, uh, um, action by anyone else, so, uh, again, I'm just trying to, uh, understand. Wh- what we do, wh- what, what are the options for us? Lastly, um, if we do not support the TIF. As a board, what's the impact to the entire TIF, um, process that's going on?
There's none.
Okay, they, they can proceed without us, basically.
Yes, so the, the key difference between this TIF. And the TIF extension that happened in twenty fifteen, when I first joined the board and when Babna and Eric. First joined the district leadership team, we all kind of joined midway through the village's discussion. There is that a TIF extension needs all of the taxing bodies, so. All of the school districts and all of the park districts and the library districts to approve the extension, it has to be unanimous. But for the creation of a TIF, um, the taxing bodies do not have to agree, so. You, I mean, at that joint review board meeting, they're all able to vote and voice support for it, but if they. You know, essentially say we don't support this at all, the village can still pass the TIF, they just have to pass it by a three-fifths majority of trustees. I believe that's, um, under the TIF Act, so essentially for us. Going forward, we can take a position if we'd like, we can pass resolution or we can send a letter of support. Or we can send a letter of op- opposition or pass a resolution to oppose it. Um, or we can attend the, um. Their hearing where they're taking public comments and express either support or opposition, but really our position isn't. Unless we just sway the whole board, you know, either way, it's really not going to impact, um, what Mondaline decides to do. They have the ability to go ahead and proceed with the TIF regardless of whether we support or oppose.
Okay, and, and one more thing since you brought it up, if, this is an example, if we decide not to support the TIF. And it still gets passed, there is no penalty or impact to us, um. You know, uh, with our EAV or in any other way of gaining from that, that TIF, the output of that TIF long term, right? There's no penalty to us if we stand, if we do not support it.
No, 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 so like if we, if we oppose the TIF. And they enacted the TIF and at the end of the twenty-three years, you know, the EAV went up by a hundred million dollars, we would still get the benefit. As a taxing body of that EAV, it, it wouldn't, yeah, exactly, it would not impact us negatively.
And then in the last vote, um, that was taken, I think, uh, all of the representatives voted for the TIF, is that correct?
Yes, right, Eric.
Correct, and I abstained.
Okay. Alright, thanks.
Oh, another question that I have then is, um, because one of the questions I asked was. Um, are TIFs renewable, which obviously is, um, not the correct term, I guess, um. The, uh, what did you call it, Joy, when they?
It's an extension, so they can, I mean, it's essentially renewable, Nikki, but they just extend it, they can extend them for twelve years.
Okay, because Amanda's answer to that was that it would go, it would require the joint review board support again.
Yeah, so with the extension, all of the taxing bodies, and so the joint review board is a representative. From each taxing body, so they would all have, you have to have a nan- unanimous support and you actually have to get, um. Approval from the state legislature to extend the TIF as well.
Okay.
So it's a more, it's a more involved process, which might be why. During that process, Mondaline spent a lot more time kind of going through the TIF and talking through all the different. Pieces of it and having more communication with us because they needed us to support it.
Okay, yeah, that wasn't clear in the, in the answer that I, that we got from Amanda, that it was, would need to have unanimous support, so.
Yeah, I think, I, I think that there's an attachment in the board packet for a paper from. Our law firm Hodges, and I think that information might be in there as well, but it's in the TIF Act, if you, um. Ever take a look there. It's, I mean, it's convoluted, it's a kind of a confusing process.
Yeah, yeah.
And Joy, we, we can, we can continue the discussion into our meeting on the sixteenth and finalize it then. Right, there's, there's no action needed tonight, otherwise.
No, I mean, we can continue discussion on the sixteenth and if the board wants to take a position either way. Um, we can decide to do so then, like I said, it, it, you know, the TIF really is going to be dependent on. What the Mondaline trustees vote at this point, um, I don't know that. You know, if we were, if we were opposed, we would sway, you know, them enough to change kind of their decision, so. Um, it seems to have support from all the other taxing bodies.
Yeah, I would, I would say if, if, if we're going to, if we're going to do anything other than support it. We better have some pretty darn good reasons for it. The, because, you know, we would, uh, we would be answerable to the community. For why we wouldn't support community development, um, that on the surface seems to. Be supportive of the community, um. I, I, listen, I. I would support voting on a resolution. In support of the TIF, so that, um, so that. So, so, so that we have done our part, we've been asked to provide a, a point of view. And we're going to provide our point of view, whether or not they need it. Uh, we were asked for it and we provide it. Um, and whether that's today or next meeting, that, 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 that's less important. But, uh, I, personally, I think that's something we ought to, we ought to vote on. A resolution.
Okay, um, we can certainly include that. In the next board meeting and we can certainly have additional discussion before we would then go vote, and so. If people have additional questions or want to have, you know, just additional discussion, we can do that then. Uh, just so that we have kind of a full appreciation and understanding of the situation. Joy or Eric, um, could you just provide? A brief summary of why the extension didn't pass in twenty fifteen, why it was not approved by this. By the District Seventy-Six Board.
By the District Seventy-Six Board?
I can tell you that in twenty fifteen. And this is because, and the only reason I remember this is because I actually looked it up. The board had two votes on it. On the extension of the TIF. And both votes were split three to three, and we only had six board members attending each meeting. So it didn't pass. It, it didn't pass essentially because we had a tie. And after it was brought the second time and we had the same outcome where it was a three to three vote. Then, um, the board president at the time indicated to the village of Mondaline that unless they were going to bring us new information that we should consider. That the board is split and, you know, we're not going to be able to move forward with a resolution to support. I don't in particular remember, recall the board discussion there. So I don't, I can't really shed any light onto the exact reasoning why, but that is kind of like the historical vote there. It is like, if you look at that TIF, because it's TIF, it's what is TIF one now, I believe. It's a completely different area. It was, um, kind of that Cardinal Square development and there was certainly. The impact of the recession at the time and that impact on housing and E A V. So. That's kind of the only insight I can give you there. I don't know, Eric, if you have anything to add.
That, that, yeah, that pretty much captured what I recollect from there as well. So just looking back at the minutes, that's. Like you said, Kevin just gathered the votes, but I, I don't have the dialogue exactly.
I know we're going to talk about this at the next meeting, but I think. For planning purposes, um, administratively, I think we need to know what kind of resolution or direction you want us to go in. Whether you want a resolution to support this and then we've, you know, then we put it on action item after discussion to support. Or a resolution not to support.
Well, I think John is asking for resolution to support. Um, does anyone, would anyone like a resolution to oppose? I'm not seeing anyone say yes to that. So, um, I'm assuming if you are opposed, then you can just vote no. For the resolution to support. So if that's okay with everyone, then I would just ask. Bhavana, that you and Lisa have a resolution to support prepared. I think, I believe Amanda said that she could give us the language for that. Um, or had sample language for that at her presentation. I know certainly the village has given us the language, um, for that in the past.
I'll contact Amanda right, uh, soon as the meeting's done.
Sure. Great. Okay. Then does anyone have any other questions or comments about the TIF? Because if not, we can move on. To the new board orientation meeting information.
Okay, so we'll go to item. Six B. In your agenda, it says, um, potential board orientation dates is May twenty-sixth or May twenty-seventh. We are going to have. One for sure, new board member, and then two, the second person will have to appoint and we're, you know, as you saw that we've. Posted potential vacancies on our website and their reminders are set up from now until spring break. And we've had a few people contact, um, Lisa. So we'll keep you updated on what that interview, um, process is going to look like. So. We'll have new board members as well as a new board total sitting down, um, after the April sixth election. And we're hoping at the first board meeting in May, which I believe is May fourth, um, meeting those new board members. So, um. We were thinking of having a board orientation, whether it's in person or virtual on May twenty-sixth or May twenty-seventh. So I wanted to see before we. Confirmed with our trainer if there was any conflict with those days.
This would be in the evening hour?
Yes.
Like a six to eight or something like that?
Yeah, something like that. Probably six to eight or five to seven, you know, we could throw something out what works.
I think that might be difficult for me, but, um.
Both of those days?
Possibly, but, um. If it works for everybody, I think I could make it work.
Can we just do like a quick thumbs up if both of those days work for you? Um, if not, just give me the day that doesn't work and then otherwise I can send a Google, um, poll out. So it's like Dave, John, Joy. Nikki, does that work for you?
Um, yeah, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm, I don't know if you guys know, but I'm expecting. And so it's right around my due date. And so. I'm not quite sure what it's going to look like for me then, but. I mean, we'll just count on you guys and we'll see what happens.
You could bring the baby.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Congrats.
Alright, great. So we'll plan on maybe the twenty-sixth. And then unless, Joy, you want me to go a week earlier or is that just not going to work for you at all, either Margaret or Nikki? Or I should just send out a Google poll maybe for.
Yeah, why don't you send out a Google poll and we can see?
Alright, I'll do that. Third item that we have is, um, it's just a quick update that Mr. Peterson. Uh, Mr. Cunningham, Dr. Draca and staff, I've been working on a. The West Oak Middle School staff have been working on some scheduling updates for what the middle school schedule will look like for next school year. To optimize, um, student learning and especially in the areas of English Language Arts and Communication Arts. So we, they are going to present. A model of, um, a schedule at the April sixth board meeting. So I just wanted to share that with you that we've been working on this or they've been working on this. Throughout the year and providing us updates, um, along the way. So I think it's coming to fruition, doing some parent surveys. Meeting with staff and then being able to present a somewhat final plan, uh, of what that twenty-one, twenty-two schedule, academic schedule. Look like for staff and students, um, at the April sixth board meeting. And if there's something in particular that any of the board members would like to see, um, us focus on or definitely address. Please shoot me an email so I can make sure that Mr. Cunningham and Mr. Peterson include that in their presentation. And then, um. I had a couple of questions and I know, uh, Joy and I talked about transitioning back to in-person board meetings. So I'd asked Eric, um, because initially when we did, uh, an in-person board meeting back in July, there was some problems with audio. Um, and I believe as Joy had mentioned, um. You know, in order not to violate Open Meetings Act, we need to hear all of our board members, um, speak. And, and or comment. So that being said, I've asked Mr. Hanson to look at what, um, Monline High School is using for their, uh, audio quality. We've purchased that equipment and it should be here within a week to ten days. So what I'm requesting is if, if it's okay with everybody and you feel comfortable coming back in person, um, as board members. Is we have a, you know, we do a trial in-house, maybe March sixteen with just the D L T. And then, um, if all goes well, figure out all the glitches and then at the April sixth board meeting, um, come back in person. It would be in a smaller setting. It wouldn't be in the West Oak Intermediate Gym. It would probably be in one of the Innovation, um, Classroom A or Classroom B. The collaboration room. So we'll, we'll kind of set those up. We'll see how the audio works. We'll do a run through of that and then, um. Kind of announce the final location, um, for the April sixth meeting if everybody is in agreement with that.
That sounds good to me. I, I feel like that gives you guys the opportunity to make sure everything's working and it. While allowing the board still to be, um, heard and understood on the Zoom. So. Yeah, thank you for putting that together. I know it's been, uh, difficult to figure out all those different pieces of technology because. When there's so many microphones, it makes it challenging to not get all that terrible feedback and actually be able to hear us.
Has anybody heard anything from, from the state or, or anybody whether going forward? It'll be, uh, board members will be allowed to, uh, to patch in remotely, for example, if they're out of town. I know that you could, but you couldn't be a, a member of the quorum. In the past. But, you know, the, the rules have been relaxed with, with COVID. And we're all remote now and members of the quorum. I don't know if anybody's heard anything about us being able, if we go back to in-person. If dialing in. Or, or zooming in. When necessary would be allowed. Anyway.
I think.
Asking.
No, it's a great question. I certainly can follow up. I haven't heard any updates. I know, um, some of our neighboring districts. That have gone back in person, some of their board members have chosen not to come back in person. So, you know, obviously because we're in this, you know, in this pandemic and going back to almost, you know, twelve months ago when we passed those resolutions of. You know, we're in a state of emergency, so therefore all the rules kind of don't apply anymore, um, and do what's best locally. I believe that, you know, until, you know, we're in phase five, we kind of can continue with that same protocol, but I will definitely follow up that once. You know, if you do start traveling again or you're not able to make it in person, if those rules still apply.
Thank, thank you. If, if we, um, if we, if we do move forward with in-person meeting in April, is that then open in-person? Open to the public in person or would the public only be able to view live stream?
Both. So we can allow attendance up to fifty people in phase four. You know, and obviously, like I said, it'll just depend on where we have meeting because, you know, the collaboration rooms aren't going to be able to hold. More than the board and, and members of the D L T. So, you know, we'll kind of have to creatively figure that out, um, in order to. Accommodate for appropriate social distance, but we're going to continue with the Zoom feature because we've had such great participation from our community with that. So we'll definitely continue with the Zoom feature.
Is it a lottery sort of mechanism or, you know, a case like this where you have limited space? Or like attendance to, you know, have some type of reservation system or. Yeah, plan for how many. Public attended person. Is there any, any mechanism for that?
I'm sorry, Dave, I did not hear your question.
So I, I, I wondered if there is any, um. Provision for making a reservation for public attendance when, you know, if we're looking at a limited amount of space that we can have. People attend in person. Is there, is it allowable? Is there any? Way to like make reservations or so that we can plan for the number of people that would attend so that we have appropriate amount of space? To say, um. Allow that attendance.
No, that's a great idea. So maybe what we'll do is if, you know, you plan to attend the meeting in person, call the district office. You know, we can put that on there. If not, click here. You know, we can add that to our reminders. Because like right now, there's, I believe, you know. Six board members and then there's. Nine D L T members and Daisy and, um, Lisa. So that's, you know, we're probably at, what is that? Okay, just did, I said it outlaw, but I didn't do the math. Eric, help me out here. So six plus.
We have seventeen panelists.
So fifty minus seventeen is what, thirty-three? We can have a couple of free people, um, come in, which I think we'll be okay with. I think we'll be, we're able to accommodate, you know, that maybe, like I said, we're going to have to check with sound. We'll kind of work out if, if we do, if we can do it in the intermediate gym. We'll do it there to allow for the audience numbers. If we can't, we might just, you know, say it's better sound in a smaller room and therefore we're going to be limiting people to come in. Sorry, it's late. I usually can add. Okay. Yep, I think that's all the discussion items that we have.
Interesting. I was just going to give a reminder because we've had a lot of really good board discussion tonight. That if anyone has an item for board discussion for future meetings, you can always let, um, Bhavana and Lisa know the Friday before the board meeting. And we can add it to the agenda. So I know there's been a lot of different issues going on and a lot of things that we haven't seen before. So definitely if, if things come up and you think that, you know, they would make for a good board discussion, please add them to the agenda. Cause I think everyone. Would agree that our discussions have been really productive and it's good to hear, um, you know, everyone's viewpoint. Okay, so that wraps up our discussion. Um, we do not have any FOIA requests this evening. Under notices and communications, we have the reminder of, you know, just our Board of Education calendar for this year. We have the February Diamond Edge that came out. And we have a notice from the Village of Mondaline on property acquisition. I don't know if there's. Eric, if you have any comments on that or it's just FYI really.
It's an FYI. Sorry.
And then I had asked Lisa to add, um, the statement of economic interest filings reminder, just because that came out. Via email. I think you all should have gotten it in the last, um, day or so. So just to put that on your radar that that needs to be done. I think the deadline is in May, but just as a reminder, um, you can do all of that online. And that concludes, um. Notices and communications. And then we move on to public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. So do we have any public comments or petitions on non-agenda items this evening? If we do, um, as always, please just feel free to type those in the chat. And we can read them into the meeting. And, um, we will pause for a minute to give people the opportunity to do that if they choose. Okay, I am not seeing any public comments. Um, so we will move on to others. Do we have any others this evening?
I can, I just add, um, to your comment, Joy, and your request for, um, for discussion items or topics. Um, and I appreciate that. And if you could, and if there are items that come up. I like the reminder of the Friday before the board agenda is posted because A, we can get it on there on the agenda. So we post it to the public when we have to give them. You know, forty-eight hours notice, but then also if there is follow-up needed from any members of the D L T. We can do that and we have some time to prepare, um, for the discussion as well.
Certainly. Thank you. Any other others? No, looks like everyone's tired. Okay, then, um, I will ask for a motion to adjourn and as Margaret and I learned when we went to our. Is the parliamentarian training last week, we can do it by, uh, we don't have to do a roll call motion. So can we have a motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Oh, we need a second.
Oh. Condela second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright.
Great.
Thank you.